Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We are live streaming. It's our July 6 meeting, 9 o'clock. Welcome to everyone. Thank you for joining. First item is our adoption of minutes from June the 22nd, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to read them? Are there any adjustments, errors, admissions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve them, please.
So moved.
Mennel and Purcell, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Disclose your potential or interests in the general nature thereof. I see no movement, so declare there are none. Presenting petitions, presentations, and delegations, and we have none. Correct. Then I guess we're ready to move into committee of the poll. Entertain a motion, please. Mover and secander. Martin and French, please call vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. First up, report is actually from myself, the Warden's Activity Report for June. I trust everyone has had a chance to look at it. Try and answer any questions if you have. And certainly thank Catherine and Carolyn for remembering where I was recording it. See, no questions. Mover and secander, please. Please read the motion.
So the recommended, the recommendation is that the June 29th, 2021 report titled Warden's Activity Report for June and COVID-19 Update, as submitted by the Warden, be received and filed for information.
Mover and secander, Jones and McPhail, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Report number two comes from Counselor Ketchba, Rural Initiatives Planning Advisory Committee Citizen Appointment. Ed, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. The report is before you. It is essentially a recommendation to replace our citizen appointee. And it's recommending Donna Lund. I am available for any questions, if anyone has any. The recommendation is to receive and file the report. And asking counsel to appoint Donna Lund to the Rural Initiatives Planning Advisory Committee as a citizen appointee.
Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I think Donna is an excellent choice and will be a real benefit to the committee. And I'm very pleased that she was willing and able to do it.
Couldn't agree more. I actually talked to Donna on the phone the other night, and she said she was looking forward to it, so good for her. She's certainly a great advocate for agriculture for many, many years. You've heard the report and the recommendation. Counselor McPhail.
I would move it, Mr. Warden.
All right. Do we have a secander? Martin. Please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Report number three, Director of Homes and Senior Services. Homes Infection Control Policy Updates, COVID-19 Immunization, Management of Fainting and Anaphylactic Reactions. I hope I said that fairly close. Michelle, good morning, welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and you did, you did well. It's anaphylactic. That was great. So the report before you is, to date, resident vaccination has been completed by Southwestern Public Health, onsite at our three homes, and offsite vaccination for staff and essential caregivers. While onsite resident COVID-19 vaccination clinics at our homes in January and February of this year resulted in the majority of our residents being vaccinated, new admissions are not always fully vaccinated, which results in the residents being placed in isolation upon admission and/or a delay in vaccination while we're awaiting the required number of candidates for onsite vaccination. Additionally, a vaccination survey was completed for frontline staff and identified one of the barriers through the survey was travel to or from vaccination clinics and the associated associated time to travel or await in those clinics. So through discussions with Southwestern Public Health, a partnership was developed to support county of Elgin Homes registered staff to receive the training and provide onsite COVID-19 vaccinations for resident staff and essential caregivers. The ability to provide onsite COVID-19 vaccinations necessitated a number of infection prevention and control policy and procedure updates, which are outlined in the report. Those were updated and revised by myself, the managers of resident care, and the medical director. There's two recommendations before council. The first, the report be received and filed, and second, that council approve the policy and procedures which are outlined in the document, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have any questions or comments?
Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
I just want to commend Michelle on getting this and getting it so that it can be done by staff there, so that we'll hopefully get a far greater uptake of vaccines among staff. I know we've got an excellent uptake with residents, but as you say, there are new residents coming in, so I, I think it's great to change and increase these, this availability for everyone.
Very true. Further comments? We have a recommendation for the motion. Do we have a mover and secander, please? Move by Martin, second by Ketchba. Please call the motion.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Move on to Manager Planning, Approval for the Official Plan Amendment, Five-Year Review, Municipality of Dutton-Dunwich Official Plan. Morning Nancy.
Good morning, Warden. Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. The attached document is the proposed amendments to the municipality of Dutton-Dunwich's official plan as a result of their five-year review process and the proposed modifications by the county. The proposed modifications are minor in nature at this time. It is recommended that upon adoption of the county's official plan review, the municipality of Dutton-Dunwich will initiate a housekeeping official plan amendment to ensure conformity with the county official plan, and I'm available for any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments for Nancy? Not seeing none. Last meeting was Elmhurst Turn. Now it's Dutton-Dunwich. We're moving along good. We have a mover and secander for the report. Please read it.
So it is recommended that council modify and approve official plan OPA 21-01, and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision in accordance with the Planning Act. And it being noted that upon adoption of the county's official plan review and associated amendments, the municipality of Dutton-Dunwich initiate housekeeping official plan amendment to ensure conformity with the county's official plan.
Thank you. Mover and secander, moved by Purcell, second by Jones. Further discussion? Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Move on to Item 5, Economic Development Coordinator, Elgin County Film and Promotion. Colin, are you taking that?
I am, Mr. Warden. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Warden, through you to council. Elgin County has a small but mighty history of filming production, including a Bet Midler film at St. Peter's Church in Wallistown back in 1997, and most recently, a popular Netflix TV series titled Lock and Key, filmed in Port Stanley. The information report before you details the streamlined process that future production companies will follow in response to recent feedback from filming location managers, member municipalities, desiring improved coordination and communication. With no previous formal process in place countywide, a new online application will centralize all the information upfront in the process, including dates and schedules, requirements, closures, special effects, et cetera. Previously, these were dealt with on an ad hoc basis. Having this information at the beginning will improve communication, speed up timelines, and limit unknowns. Staff has worked and connected with other film-friendly municipalities such as Branton, Durham, industry location managers, and Ontario creates a division of the Ontario government promoting creative industries to learn about industry standards, appropriate documentation, and best practices in Ontario and for our county. The appended documents to this report are a newly created code of conduct policy for cast and crew members, a letter of notification that is required to be distributed to area-impacted property owners, and a formal release and indemnity agreement as reviewed by the county solicitor. The documents can now be filled out and submitted online with the insurance requirement as part of the application process. Municipalities and the county can now be fully prepared from the start of the production with the most available information and begin any timelines that are required through the production process. Staff also aims to promote this exciting opportunity through membership in various film industry partnerships, digital libraries, and a dedicated webpage that shares our film history, location ideas, and local sourcing initiative. Recognizing that Toronto is a major center for film production in North America and with strong support and funding programs provided by the provincial government such as sorry, areas such as Elgin County, located within close proximity to Toronto, will be positioned to capitalize on the future filming opportunities. The recommendation is before you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. You're a very good report, Colin. Mary French and Ed and I sit on Score. And we actually had a president from Branton County, was it? And they're very involved in the numbers, the economic spinoffs are quite staggering, very, very impressive. So it's, it's, it's a growing industry and pretty exciting, so. Any questions for Colin? Not seeing any. We have the recommendation.
To receive and file the report presented.
All right. Mover and secander, please. Mennel and Jagger. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Move on to General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise, Joseph Street, Speed Reduction. We have Brian here in the office. Morning, Brian.
Morning, Ms. Warden. Thank you. Through you to council. At the last meeting, a council request to lower the posted along Joseph Street to 30 kilometers an hour was received, and council directed staff to investigate through to investigate and report back. As a result of staff's review, it's recommended that the posted speed along Joseph Street be reduced to 40 kilometers per hour due to the road's horizontal and vertical geometry between Coburn Street and East Road within the village of Port Stanley. Recommendations are before you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, comments? Fairly straightforward. Have the recommendation, mover and secander, please. I'm sorry.
I should read the motion.
Please, please, yes.
And the motion is be resolved that the posted speed limit along Joseph Street or County Road 23 be reduced to 40 kilometers an hour, and that bylaw 2058, being a bylaw to authorize speed limits, be amended accordingly, and that the municipality of Central Elgin be requested to install the proposed signage at the county's expense, and further that OPP be advised of this new reduced posted speed zone.
Mover and secander, please. Jones and McPhail. Is that a I don't know if you're scratching your head or that Duncan, but please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Report from Chief Administration Administrative Officer, Elgin, Ontario Health Team Update, Collaboration Agreement, Affiliate Member Statement of Participation, please.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. The purpose of this report was to provide council with an update regarding the status of the Elgin, Ontario Health Team's planning efforts, as well as some next steps for county council. The recommended motions are that the June 29th, 2021 report titled Elgin, Ontario Health Team Update, Collaboration Agreement, Affiliate Member Statement of Participation be received and filed, and that the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer be authorized to execute the Ontario Health Team Collaboration Agreement.
Any questions for Julie, comments? Counselor Martin, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to state that I declared a conflict when I, with the hospital board and did not attend the meeting on this, and that's why I'm sitting in on the one with the county, because I do sit on both boards and they're both part of this agreement. So I'm, I'm voting with the county, and I'm not, I was not, I did not participate in the hospital board one.
Thank you for that. Further comments, questions?
So moved.
Moved by Mennel, second by French.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Report number eight, again from the Chief Administrative Officer, International Plowing Match Scholarship Council Opportunity. Please go.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. 2021 marks the final year for the International Plowing Match Legacy Scholarship Program. Since 2010, scholarships have been a great legacy for the International Plowing Match to ensure continued investment in the development of local leaders, specifically those who are seeking post-secondary education and training in, in the field of agriculture. This opportunity presented to council is to award four scholarships in partnership with the International Plowing Match Legacy Funds to four candidates in the, in the amount of a total of $10,000. So the county's commitment would be $5,000. And it is recommended that Elgin County Council approve this as a one-time contribution to support the final intake of the IPM Legacy Scholarship Program, and that this contribution be funded through any unused community grant program funds and supplemented, if necessary, by unused council training and development funds. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Julie? Counselor Jones, please go ahead.
Not so much a question, but just I would I think it's a great idea to, we have four worthy participants this year, and I think it's a great way to finalize scholarship.
Wouldn't agree more. Counselor McPhail, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Some of my movements here are more swatting mosquitoes than they are anything else, but but I think that, I think that this program has, has certainly showcased a lot of our very, very excellent agricultural students in, in Elgin County, and I, I think this is an opportunity to, as, as Counselor Jones says, kind of, kind of go out on a high note and certainly we know that we have discussed, you know, the potential of maybe doing this in a, in a, in a, in a way that we can bring some people together that were responsible for the for the whole event and certainly finish it off in, in a way that I think that we can all be proud of and Elgin County can be proud of, and that these are, these are great young people that we have this year. They have been all along, and, and I think it's really really something to be able to recognize these young people, and, and I think many of them are going to come back to Elgin County and, and make their their professions and their, their homes in Elgin County, and I think that that is so important in today's day and age, so certainly supporting our youth is something that, that I think that we really should look at, and hopefully the county council will, will support this, and then we can turn the creative juices forward and come back to county with, with an additional report as to how this is going to take place.
Thank you, Duncan. The reason I ask Duncan, there may be some people, some, especially in the viewing, that do not realize that Duncan was the 2010 International Plowing Match Chairman and, and very, very much involved in certainly brought a lot of great volunteers along, and this is the legacy, so that's why I asked you to speak. I think this is a tremendous, tremendous solution. When we interviewed the applications, they, they were four outstanding ones, so. Certainly the pride of Elgin County come out very strong. Great memories. Any further comments? Duncan, go ahead.
I would be very much honored to move this recommendation, Mr. Warden.
Certainly. Appreciate that. Do we have a secander? Grant, did you move it?
I would re-raise that to Duncan's honor.
All right. How about McPhail and Jones? Ready to call vote?
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail. Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Good news for everyone. Move on to Chief Administrative Officer, Services for Senior Study Underway in Elgin County, please.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. The purpose of this report is to notify council that work is underway to study services for seniors in Elgin County. At a high level, the study will define existing community resources, include a survey of seniors, caregivers, and related stakeholder agencies, include a program summary, identify future considerations for seniors programming in Elgin, to include an assessment of facilities in some of Elgin's municipal partners, partner municipalities, and recommend communication, outreach, and marketing strategies for all seven partner municipalities. The county's study will be funded using municipal modernization funding received from the Government of Ontario, and the total cost of the study is $28,231,000. And we anticipate the study will be wrapped up sometime early fall, so September to October, and we are working very closely with local municipal CIOs to ensure that the study meets the needs of the county as a whole. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Questions for CEO? Comments? Not seeing any. Mover and secander, please.
The recommended motion is that the report titled Senior Services, Services for Senior Study Underway in Elgin County from the Chief Administrative Officer dated June 30th, 2021 be received and filed.
Mover and secander, please. Purcell. And Deputy Mayor, Deputy Warden Mennel. Please, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And Julie, you're still up. COVID-19 Emergency Team Planning, June Update.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. Hopefully, this is one of maybe the last two reports of this nature we have to present to council. Fingers crossed we continue to have positive trends for COVID cases in our community and across the province. Notwithstanding that, the report provides you with an update on our operational activities in support of our COVID-19 response. And the recommended motion is that the June 29th, 2021 report titled COVID-19 Emergency Team Planning, June Updates, submitted by the Chief Administrative Officer, be received and filed for information.
Thank you for that. And that is actually wonderful news, just to think, look ahead, and it is great news, so. Do we have questions for Julie or comments? All right. Need a mover and secander, please? Ketchba and Jones.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you for that. Move on to Council Correspondence. Items for consideration, I don't see any. Letters for Information, Consent Agenda. There's a letter to the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks regarding the Conservation Authorities Act. How do we deal with that?
It depends if there's questions or comments.
Do we have comments on that? Counselor Martin.
It just, it's very important, and I'm glad to see that Conservation Ontario and the new chair, Mr. Mitchell, is right on top of it with the new minister. It will be interesting to see how, whether they follow the requests.
Further comments? Do we receive and follow her?
I'd just like to provide a quick update, if I may, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council regarding Item 7.2.3, which is correspondence from the Elgin Manor Resident Council. We're pleased to report that hairdressing services resumed as of yesterday, and the Warden and I will be attending the Residence Council meeting, which is scheduled for tomorrow morning at 10:30.
All right. Certainly welcome news for them. Do we need, are we going to deal with them all same, or, okay, so we need a motion? Mover and secander, please. Martin and Mennel. Go ahead.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
9-0, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Move on to other business. We have statements, inquiries by members. Counselor Jones.
A couple. One under new business. Are you dealing with new business now, or is that coming up?
I think so. Go ahead.
So Ward Marks and myself attended a special meeting of the Board of Health this morning. They have, we're in a bit of a financial pinch right now because funding from the province is not coming through as quickly as it possibly should. Finance officer has gone to the bank and asked for 1.8 million in, in the line of credit. Actually asked for more. The bank is only going to give 1.8 at this point. There'll be another discussion with the bank again this afternoon, asking for an increase to 3 million of line of credit. This is strictly to do with COVID response, basically the setup of the This is strictly to do with COVID response, basically the setup of the arenas for the mass vaccination clinics. There'll be a letter coming from the health unit regarding this in the future, once we know what this afternoon brings, but $3 million only takes us out to the end of September. That pays for the bills of the clinics and all the staffing that is required, the extra staffing. So there will be a letter coming. It will state probably that there could be a spot where the health unit has to come back to Miss Valley's and ask for more money. Just thought council should be aware of it at this point for discussion because of timing with the health unit meetings and county meetings and, and I think it's probably something that should be discussed a little bit. What the possibility could be sometime in August if the health unit has to quickly come back to the counties and the cities for a little bit of extra money. If Ward Marks has anything to add to that, but a little sobering this morning.
Well, thanks, Grant. You summarized it pretty good. Would point out that this is considered a loan. As a funding partner, we're just helping out with cash flow. This is not a levy. This would be a temporary loan with the expectation to be paid back. Is that your understanding too, Grant?
Correct. It's waiting for funding that was promised by the province way back in early March, still has not come through. And it's a significant amount of money it's cost to do these programs with the vaccination clinics.
And I believe I heard Counselor Mulder from Tilsenberg asked a question this morning that we have in writing that the province will cover this funding, which is, I appreciate him asking that. We have the assurance that, you know, the money could come this afternoon from the province, or it could be Christmas. And that's the part, and, you know, bills have to be paid, wages, et cetera, so. I see Mr. Bunshu is listening carefully, so.
Warden, we're preparing a half million pull ahead right now of our payments that we have scheduled for the rest of the year that we'll send out today to assist.
Very good, and that's appreciated. So thank you for the, the comments, Counselor Jones.
For Grant. Grant, is this just southwestern public health that's got the financial pinch, or is this all the health units in Ontario?
I wouldn't say all, but there's several health units that are in a bit of a pinch right now for the same reasons. I would say probably some of the smaller ones are the ones that are struggling most right now, but that's just presumption on my part.
I think I did hear Cynthia say that most, most of them are struggling. It's simply the funding hasn't come. And the bills, bills keep coming. They've had to fund the arenas for staff them and all the expenses, so there are some pretty extraordinary expenses, so. Counselor Giger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a quick question. Will they also claim the cost of borrowing the money to the government since the cash flow is lacking on the government side?
Yes, that, I believe it was a former counselor, Dave Warden, it's a provincial appointment. He actually asked that question. Interest is an allowable expense. I'm pretty sure I heard that, so. Grant?
Yeah, I guess also it was discussed that maybe the counties and the cities send a letter to our local MPP and suggest that maybe they need to send the money sooner than later because obviously our interest rate's higher than the province's interest rate, so they're losing money every time they don't send us money in time.
Counselor Martin.
I'm just curious. I had my first vaccine in London at the Agriplex, and then I had my second vaccine in St. Thomas. And in London, most of the workers were wearing shirts saying volunteer, and I didn't, I didn't see volunteer on shirts in the one in St. Thomas. I'm sure there are lots of volunteers, but just might be a suggestion that so people realize that there are also people that are volunteering it. They're not all paid help. Maybe Julie could pass that on to her sister, Jamie.
Well, we all know that volunteers are priceless. Yep. Counselor Jones, go ahead.
Yeah, I believe it's a mixture in Oxford, Elgin of volunteers and some paid help, just to flesh out the ability to take the immunizations as quickly as possible. It's just a fact of life. But there was quite a few volunteers involved as well. They may not have been identified that way.
So, go ahead.
So I recommend that, given the discussion today, that council support the cash flow needs of southwestern public health and that the warden and chief administrative officer be directed to execute agreements, necessary agreements to support transfer of funds to southwestern public health and and further that staff be directed to report back to council with additional information once it is available. And additionally, that a letter of support be sent to the ministry indicating the need for, the urgent need for funding to southwestern public health.
Everyone, Counselor Purcell?
I'm just more than happy to move that.
Thank you. Thank you. A second or please? Ketchba. All right, we're ready. Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
All right, thank you for that, and move on to notice of motion, please. Do we have any? Not seen any? Matters of urgency? Fingers crossed? Grant, go ahead.
I missed my opportunity to state and inquire, so I'd just like to, after, pardon me, 10 years, it's a pleasure to announce that the sale of the Ford property and like to thank staff from the county level and MPP Urick for all the help along the way to make this a expedited initiative, since it was under such a short timeline to turn this around and then make the sale possible. I'd just like to thank staff, Julie and Brian especially, and everybody else that was involved in the process.
Well, granted, it was great news. I offer my congratulations to yourself and your Southwell team. And as you stated, the county team, we recognized the great opportunity as well, and I think we could all be proud because everyone jumped in, worked well together, and we're all happy with the news, so looking, looking forward to it. So congratulations to everyone involved. All right. We're at closed session? Okay. I will, at this point, entertain a motion to move into closed session. Deputy Warden Mennel and Counselor French, thank you. Go ahead with the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Thanks. Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
All right, wait a second till we get ready. And we are back live. Entertain a motion to leave. Rising report, yes. Mover. Jones and Mennel? Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel. Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole?
Have to go through each of the closed session items.
Okay, sir. Go ahead, please.
Closed session, item number one, the recommendation is that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and second or please? French and Giger? Call the vote, please.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones. Thanks. Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next report?
For closed session, item number two, be it resolved that the verbal report from the chief administrative officer be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Moved by McPhail, second by Ketchba. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Next one, please.
Closed session, item number three, be it resolved that the report from the chief administrative officer be received for information.
Mover and second or please? Giger and Purcell. Please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin. Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Zero, the motion is carried.
And one more?
For closed session, item number four, be it resolved that the report from the chief administrative officer be received for information.
Mover and second or please? Mennel and Jones? Go ahead.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Now we're at motion to adopt recommendations from committee of the whole? Go ahead.
We need a mover and second or?
Oh, certainly. Mover and second or please? French and McPhail.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail. Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Consideration of bylaws?
Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 21-30 being a bylaw to amend the schedule to bylaw number 20-58 being a bylaw to authorize speed limits.
Mover and second or please? Jones and Mennel? Go ahead.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. One more?
Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 21-31 being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the municipal council of the corporation of the county of Elgin at the July 6th, 2021 meeting.
Martin will move.
Thank you. Second or please? French, go ahead of the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones. Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Now I'm at the bottom of my page, so I think we're, I think we're almost there. Once again, I want to thank you for your participation and your help. I will note that we've had longer meetings, so it's kind of nice. I remember those five to 12 meetings, but if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. It looks like Purcell and Jones, please call the vote.
Deputy Warden Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes, and Mr. Warden, can you confirm the next meeting? Because I believe we only have one this month.
It's August the 10th.
All right.
Okay.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
All right, once again, thank you, everyone. Advise everyone to enjoy this summer. It goes so fast. Stay healthy and enjoy it. Thank you, everyone.